Jason.
We'll call the City of Clouston workshop and special meeting. Thirty first, July twenty five, two P M. If you would please stand and join me in the prayer and the pledge. Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for the City of Clouston and all that work here, Father, and live here and speak your blessings and give us relief. And thank you. Thank you. We thank you, Lord, for allowing us to pray and look for your guidance, Father, and let us be grateful and praise your love.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, if you would do the role.
Commissioner Edmonds, Commissioner Gardner, Vice Mayor Highslope.
Here.
Mayor Pittman. Commissioner Williams said he will be out. Oh, I'm sorry, City Manager Williams.
Here.
And City Attorney took to have a quorum, sir.
No changes, Mayor.
Any comments from the public on any non.
Oh, sorry about that. I was not on.
No, no, just the button.
Okay, now we're recording. First item on the special meeting agenda is Resolution two thousand twenty five twenty nine approving the agreement between Huntington National Bank and the City of Clouston Golf Course for equipment. Fill us in on that, manager.
Yeah, that's the equipment that you guys approved in this year's budget, and for whatever reason, this bank wanted you guys to approve again. So that's pretty much it. It is, what is it? It's green and a. Yeah, and you guys approved that in the budget.
In the budget. It's a lease, too.
Yep.
Okay, and Ms. Attorney, everything looks good?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll read the Resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty nine by title, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Clouston, Florida authorizing the negotiation, execution, and delivery of lease of. Two zero 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 two nine three 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 seven. I think I put an extra three, but you can figure it out, clerk. Uh, dated April eleventh, two thousand twenty five, it is the.
Yeah.
Between the City of Clouston, uh, doing business as Clouston Golf Course on, uh, twelve oh one San Luis Avenue, Clouston, Henry County, Florida, and the Huntington National Bank. One 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 zero zero, uh, Wayzata, Minnesota, five five three oh five, authorizing the appropriate city officials to execute the agreement, providing for severability, conflict, and an effective date. Any comments by the public, by the commission? Okay, entertain a motion. Motion by Edmonds.
Second.
Second by Highslope. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, guys. Really need it.
Yes. Okay, next on the agenda is. Uh, consideration of Resolution two thousand twenty five dash thirty approving the Woodward and Curran Agreement. I think we have some representatives here today.
Yeah, we do, Mayor. Uh, I look forward to working with these guys. We need the support at this wastewater plant. We're a little behind on some issues out there, and these guys, they've been working with LaBelle quite well, so we, we really need and hope they can support us quite well, which I know they will. And I think Ryan and Jay, uh, you want to come up and just tell a little bit about the, your company?
Hi, for the record, Jay Sheehan with Woodward and Curran. I've been with Woodward, uh, we, the firm started nineteen seventy nine. I've been with the firm for twenty seven years. Um, as indicated, what, what our firm does is we do engineering and we do operations. So we operate plants for, on behalf of municipalities nationwide. We specialize in smaller municipalities. There's some big, big companies out there that do that. We're more of a, of kind of a customized offer, you know, a customized solution for smaller communities. As mentioned, we have a contract that we've had about three years in LaBelle, and we've really helped their utility get out of where they were and get them. A little more forward-thinking, helping with capital planning and maintenance and, and getting ahead of things. Uh, when we, when we run a utility, really take over. There's a period of time where you go from catch-up, doing kind of corrective maintenance, and you get to preventative maintenance. And it takes, it takes a couple of years to really get there, and we're, we're now getting there in LaBelle. So you're chasing the, the main breaks or you're chasing backups or whatever, but then after a time, you start to get ahead of it and, and really, um, the investment starts to really pay off. We're, we're in that zone right now, and it's going really well. We have about, um, ten projects in Florida. Um, we work a bunch more in northern Florida with Lake County. We have City of Groveland, City of Bushnell. Um, we're, we're working with Winter Springs. We've been selected. We haven't started yet there. Um, LaBelle, uh, Water Conserve is a, is a really interesting project. We've been there for over twenty years, and that's a project for Orange County, City of Orlando. It was a joint facility, and that's not a specialty of municipal government, a partner in that way, so they, they've hired, they hired us about twenty-five years ago. And we've been there since multiple renewals and things are going well. When we started, just as a point of reference, that project, we were thirty-five people. And over time, we've been able to continually, you know, get down to, we now have sixteen running that same facility. But over time, with automation and efficiencies, we've been able to, and that's kind of how we try to keep budgets. You know, by saving with the corrective maintenance, by saving in, you know, chemical costs and efficiencies, we try to really keep the budget stable for the community. Questions for?
Appreciate you coming. Uh, we really do need some support because D E P, we got nailed pretty good again, uh, in which these guys are fully aware. They'll work with D E P with us in our permitting. And also on our upgrade, which, you know, we do have, what, sixteen million at this time, so, and of course, we're in the design stage of that plant, so, yeah, look forward to it. Thank you.
If I may ask, I'd, you know, by having that engineering group and the operations group, we, we also have a funding team, so we help communities. And that's another thing we've talked a lot about, how.
Yep.
If we could find you grants to offset those capital costs, that would be great for the community.
Think what, forty million for LaBelle, you guys?
Yeah, I think we're, we're north of that at this point.
Oh, you, yeah. Yeah.
Like Groveland was a utility that was borrowing from the general fund when we got there, and they not only paid all that back, but we've been able to capture over a hundred million in grants for upgrades, so. And they're growing very fast, so they had to make a lot of moves. It's our specialty. It's, we're excited to be here, and we thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to say something. Um, you know, based on the city manager's recommendation, you know, I will vote to, to approve this, but I can tell you that in the past. When we've had an outside company come run a plant for us, uh, things did not go well. And, um, so I am concerned, but I know from what I hear that you have a very good track record. Um, but, and I know that there's specialties that you can provide us that we do not have now, but the past experience that we, I've had with. Seeing what a, a national company, you know, their lack of attention, all, it all started out really nice. It started out well. Um, but, um, so it is a concern of mine, but based on Danny's recommendation, I mean, I will support this. But I will also be making sure that we're, you're doing, you said you were doing with the, that our expectation is being met as well.
And, and thank you for saying that. It's, um, we appreciate the support, but we want to be held accountable in our contract and in contract operations. Companies don't like to do that. But in our contract, we have a termination clause for convenience, where if we're not doing what we promised, you can get out of the contract. Really, you know, there's some time periods where you don't want us to leave the next day because we got to transition, but there, you know, we, we, we have that in there for a reason. Because it holds our people accountable as well. So when you start to see that slippage, we talk. If we don't correct it, then boot us out. We, we put our, we kind of try to put our money where our mouth.
Thank you.
This for just wastewater or both?
You wastewater.
Yeah.
Water, the water plant, we're doing quite well. Yeah, wastewater, as Lincoln tell you, we're, we're struggling, and we got to stop that pattern. I think this is a good solution.
Where we really had a problem in the past, Commissioner Gardner's talking about, was with our.
Yeah.
Water plant, so, um, I agree.
Yeah, and as Danny has said, I mean, when we took it over, it's, it's certainly improved, but we're in a different situation, and, um, certainly going out for grant funding is critical for our expansion.
A manager's budgeted item and. Now this says April they'll start, but obviously that's not true.
I just, I just wanted them to present, and then, then we work it in the budget.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, just for the record, it usually takes about thirty to sixty days for us to start, you know, so once we have a signed contract, we work with the employees and bring people on. So that's, that's, uh, there's a transition period there.
Groundwork.
Yeah.
We can, we'll work that.
We'll work that out.
Thank you.
I'll read this resolution by title, twenty twenty five dash thirty, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Clouston, Florida approving a piggyback contract between the city and Woodward and Curran, Inc. Utilizing the city, a Bushnell contract with Woodward and Curran for the operations and maintenance services, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement, providing for severability, conflict, and an effective date. Any further discussion? Entertain a motion?
A motion, second.
Motion by Highslope, second by Gardner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you again.
Okay, thank you guys for coming and looking forward to getting us online and on track.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome to stay, but you do not have to, because we're going to move into a little bit of a workshop now.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our discussion today is three items, and if you want to move them around for importance, you're more than welcome. We don't have to finish right at three. Our budget workshop anyway. But we hope to. Okay, the first one is, uh, proceed with the commercial modules, how to direct staff. I know I spoke with the manager yesterday, and I think we already have a little bit of direction, but.
Actually, uh, Chris, you mind coming up and discuss what you threw out today was some pretty good stuff, and Bailey, I think you've interviewed it or looked at it also, reviewed it.
Probably the most. Uh, Chris Cooper, building official. Um, I'm not actually ready to present anything today. I want to work through it with counsel and, um, I'm not real quick to, to just talk, just to be heard. I found some, uh, possible solution moving forward as far as modulars go. Um, some other municipalities around us, they have what's called a move-on. Um, application that would go through planning and zoning prior to getting to the building department to actually pull the permit and do the job, but. Under that, it would have to, it would need the approval of the planning and zoning committee, um, which we would put them before. And I think that we can include this for modulars as well as manufactured homes, but I got to look into the legality of that. Modulars are not seen as a, a vehicle manufactured. For those of you guys that don't know, they're, they're regulated by D O T. They're not regulated by any Florida building code. The setup is regulated by a building code, but it's not, um, considered a, a, a home. It's not considered a structure. It's considered a vehicle. That's a, a manufactured home. But a modular home, because it has a permanent foundation that is engineered, modular home is not seen as a vehicle. It's seen as a structure once it's delivered. So I got to see where the law will allow me to mix those two in a, in an ordinance to present to y'all. But I think that in this case with the Catholic Church, if I can be forward, had it gone through this step, it would have been either approved or not, denied before we ended up where we are now. Um, so I think that this would just be a, kind of a safe way to go about getting approval before we approve something. And ultimately, it puts checks and balances in as opposed to just somebody comes to me as a building official, they meet all the criteria of the building, um, code, and I give them a permit, and then I find out that this was never wanted in the community. So it, it gives opportunity for more people to put their eyes on it and either approve or deny it, in my opinion. But I emailed it over to, um, Danny and, and Ms. Tuck. I, I kind of want to dig through it a little bit before I present it to you guys. That way, if there's anything that needs to be taken out, we can take it out, and y'all can just get to the meat and potatoes of the, of what I'm proposing.
I think we're sitting in a good place. I think we're good, but I appreciate what you're doing, Chris. Yeah, definitely that'll support us later.
What, what can we do now? We are meeting. But anyway, uh, so what can we do with what we have now? Moving forward, I agree. The more eyes, uh, that can possibly stop something, the better, but. I know Katie might have had a chance to look at it also.
Yeah, absolutely. So what we're looking at right this minute is a zoning code enforcement case for the, the current modules. We were able to find several provisions where they were not in compliance. That they're moving forward right now in terms of a, a new ordinance or amendments to an existing ordinance. We have a couple of avenues. If you all want to give us some direction and some suggestions today, or we can draft up an ordinance for you all to workshop. Um, one thing that I would recommend, and I think Chris and I discussed this, um, one of the biggest issues I saw was that. It seems like the building permit process and the zoning permit process are not talking to each other. So in, in this case, there could have very well been a position where, um, they got a building permit, but there was no zoning review, um, and that's a big issue. So, um, I think part of the ordinance should be to include zoning review as well. Um, so if you all, however you all want to do it, if you want to give us some suggestions, and we'll take it back and have a draft ordinance ready for you all to workshop. Or if you just want us to bring you back something that you can play with, we can do it either way.
I mean, I like the idea of the three of y'all working on this together and coming back with, you know, a recommendation for us. Because I know that once we sit up here and we've talked about things and we've worked on things, and then we take it back to the P and Z, and then we ask for, you know, more input, it doesn't seem to get us to where we want to be. And honestly, it sounds to me that, I mean, the three of y'all, y'all have discussed this, and I'd like to see the recommendations that y'all come up with, that's all, but not only what's going on now, but for the future. I agree with Mayor has said, definitely for the future, and certainly any gap that you're seeing right now, those need to be addressed without a doubt.
Well, and that's what I found. I, I sat and dug through the ordinance. I, I fished my way through it. I've only been here for two weeks, and I probably know y'all's ordinance better than most of your citizens. But, um, I found four things that they are in direct violation of, um, a fifth, which is kind of vague, but that's why I wanted to present it to the planning and zoning committee, um, showed it to them. They suggested a separate code case. I just had a code case open for not having a permit for the structures. That one is active right now. Um, they just sent me over a draft, which I'm going to go through with Ms. Tuck on. We're going to open a separate code case for the code violations, not for not having a permit, but there are four violations. Um, possibly a fifth, depending on how the magistrate looks at it, but we're trying to look at expediting that to get it in front of the magistrate as soon as possible. Um, I did have a meeting with, um, the representatives from the Catholic Church, and I'm due to have another one tomorrow. Um, I was pretty forward with them, but I told them that I need to get answers above me before I can, uh, tell you what needs to happen, but I was pretty forward with them that. The, um, ask for forgiveness instead of permission approach is not really in their favor right now.
Just one of the things I will tell you, I'm sorry, some of the neighbors have complained about, you know, that there's a brand-new parking lot in their backyard. And that there's not a transition between residential and public, because I think that's zone public. Is the zoning on that, because it's a church, is it different than, because it's not commercial, I don't think.
It's zoned R one B, which is a residential, um, it's a residential zoning that allows.
Which is where we're having.
There's not a transition between the, the houses in that neighborhood and a parking lot in our codes?
Not in the code, no, ma'am, not that I've seen. That's where I'm having a hard time with the code, because the code is, uh, intended for a residential design. And obviously, a church is not a residential design. You're limited to how many buildings you can have on your property. They superseded that twelve, fifteen, twenty-five years ago. And now we're including another one, so it's, it's kind of got us in a bad spot because there is no ordinance that separates when you do a church build in a residential neighborhood. There's no checks and balances in there, I guess.
That may be something we can add as we go along here.
Yep.
Well, absolutely, because when you see a, a parking lot for, for, you know, any business or even a church, I mean, I know it's a nonprofit, but. You still have a lot of traffic that goes through that, and it's right up to somebody's bedroom window, and so it just, you know. It's something that needs to be addressed, obviously, this has all come up at this time.
And my intention.
Street parking, now it's changed, now it's changed.
Yes, ma'am. My intention is to have an active code case tomorrow. I'm trying to rush that to the magistrate, but that's a sensitive process from what I've been told by Mario. Um, I said if we rushed it, what does that look like? He said Christmas. Um, he was being facetious, but it, nothing's quick, like trying to get it.
Special magistrate meeting.
Additional one.
Okay, I didn't know that that was an option.
We've talked about that in the past, that one was not enough.
I think I would do that.
Well, and Ms. Tuck and I looked through, uh, well, she did and informed me, um, some of the legislative requirements for that. It's up to thirty days or as little as five days to serve them a notice to get into compliance. This conversation's been happening for a long time, so I think that we would probably be safe going with the lesser of the two numbers, because it's not like it's a new issue that they don't know that, that they need to address.
The legal standard is reasonable, notice given the circumstances, so that's what we're looking at, which is never an easy answer, obviously, but I think given the circumstances, they have to. Commissioner Gardner, to, to your, um, point about the asphalt parking lot, we hadn't been looking at that because they did give a permit for that, um, but there may be some buffer requirements that we need to look at that, that may be helpful.
I had heard something about drainage, and I think you mentioned the asphalt. It was a concrete sidewalk.
That's, Chris, they were told to put concrete there, so that's something you have to tell them. They were told.
They, when I met with them, they, I asked them if they've had inspections, and they said that they have, and I don't think that they have. That would fail their inspection. It has to be six inches thick, it has to be concrete, anything in the right way, at least. So I can, I can get them for that. As far as what they did on the asphalt, as long as it meets what was on their plans, they were already approved, so I'm going to have a hard time saying you have to do this if this is what was approved. But our ordinance does, um, it does require six inch.
And it, we need to clean that one up, because I told it's both ways. It can go asphalt, but as the mayor, and I think the majority of us, we want concrete.
Yes, sir.
In the, we don't want asphalt.
Which is where I'm, I'm kind of hoping to get some of the ordinances cleaned up, because from my standpoint, my job is to understand the Florida building code and what it says and the, the legislation behind it. If they come to me with everything put together and that all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed, from the Florida building code standpoint, my hands are going to be tied. As far as issuing a permit, unless we have checks and balances in our ordinance that would prevent it, because there's. Essentially, there's three hoops to jump through to get a permit. There's Florida legislature, Florida building code, and then local municipality. So if the local municipality is not clear on, as far as direction for issuing a permit for anything, as long as they meet the other two codes, they get a permit.
But I know you got a lot right now, but if you can, just remember that, make it clear.
Oh, I will. They haven't called it in for inspection yet, but. Yeah, I'll be there.
Look at that, but I was told it's kind of iffy, but yeah, if we could clear it up and make it concrete.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's the same question. How long are we looking before we can actually make them move them off the lot? In your estimation, I know you can't give me exact.
Um, if we can get a, a code enforcement case opened up by tomorrow, um, for the code in particular, this one, um, and call a special magistrate hearing. I would anticipate, depending on what special magistrate does, in terms of the, if there's any grace period or anything like that, um, I would probably give forty-five to sixty days.
And I'd like to see the red sticker back on the door that somebody took off.
Are they, they're not used to that?
They, until they have a permit, they are legally not allowed to do anything on that property, or, sorry, to those buildings. So I drive by several times just to see what's going on and see if there's any.
Can we get that work, stop work notice back on there?
I think someone killed it off.
I didn't know that any, I didn't know it had been taken off.
It was on the door. We, we probably could do.
Okay, we'll get it back on there, either today or tomorrow.
Maybe they could clean up a little bit. Uh, they have cones out and wood stacked up, and I know they don't want to because they're in the middle of. But there are some things out by the sidewalk, chunks of concrete and things that. They kind of need to clean up that area where they have been working.
Yes, sir.
Could ask them to do that. Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
All right. Adam Four is discussed and direct on how to proceed regarding amending the ordinance on storage on private property. I think this kind of goes in conjunction with the R V. From what I understand, I don't know if I was talking to Lakeisha or Danny, but we're lumped into one ordinance for R Vs and storage on property. So do we want to separate those to make it easier, or will it make it easier?
I, I would recommend separating them. When they mentioned storage to me the other day, I'm thinking storage, wait a minute, but it is linked together, so I would, my recommendation would be to separate.
Separate the R Vs from trailers and work trucks and.
Yes.
Boat trailers or boat and airboats?
Airboat.
Is that what normally you've seen, the separation of R V campers different than other storage?
So this is more a code enforcement thing, which I've never really been involved in code enforcement, but. The ordinance doesn't mention anything else. It just mentions recreational vehicles. It doesn't, it doesn't address anything else, so. As far as code enforcement goes, it's, it, it says that they're allowed a recreational vehicle. That's, that's what it says, and it says that, I mean. Uh, nothing in this chapter shall be construed to prohibit any resident of the city from storing a recreational vehicle of any type on such lots. Um, on the same lot as his residence, provided such recreational vehicle complies with the definition of a recreational vehicle or camping trailer. And is not occupied, used, or, or used for any purpose of, or while stored, carries a certain vehicle registration tag. Um, provided further that the, that such recreational vehicle is stored at least sixty feet from the front property line and ten feet from. from the front property line and ten feet from all other property lines, and then it goes into commercial trailers and stuff like that." But it doesn't mention anything else, like, or enclosed trailer, a lawn trailer, a lawnmower, a side-by-side, a jet ski. It doesn't, it just mentions a recreational vehicle.
And from what you've seen, there's not any other storage ordinance that we have on the book?
I could not find anything as far as, and I mean, when you open this can of worms, I mean, some people store pallets, some people store milk crates, thousands of them. And like, where, where do we draw the line whenever we're, I mean, you could make what you think is a comprehensive list of what can and can't be stored, and then somebody brings bird cages, and that wasn't covered. So, I mean, I'm being kind of goofy, but some people store some pretty goofy stuff in their backyard that somebody else has to stare at. So I don't know how, that's why I didn't come with anything prepared, because I'm trying to find an ordinance that is kind of all-inclusive to present to you to consider. But I haven't found it, because how do you include bird cages and pellets?
Have you worked on other cities?
I have. So typically, what I've seen is two separate ordinances, one of outdoor, of storage of vehicles outdoors, and then one of outdoor storage of personal property. And there are two separate ordinances typically, and they're separated.
I think that's what we need to, maybe see what the one she has, cities.
Anything, anything else? You just want Danny and the attorney to bring back a draft, two separate ordinances?
Yeah.
And of course, there would be a subsection under vehicles concerning RVs.
Have you guys thought of anything about RVs, what, side yard, backyard, size of the yard matters? Or, you know, these, like, like we say, the lots on the south side are a lot smaller. Usually, they're on the sides or in the back. And then you have some, I mean, like Roger Moss, that's a nice, he's... To me, that, that's acceptable. But whereas these people are parking them in these yards on grass, I have a problem, because it's killing the grass. Some of them let it grow up. That's, that's kind of my issue. How can we make them keep it clean? And unable to attach anything to them permanently. I mean, I'm watching, when I ride in the mornings, I see these guys, they get the power to these RVs. Now, maybe they're running stuff, that's fine, but I also see water tied to them. So I think there would be something, maybe where it's a temporary basis, like if I'm gonna clean it and take it on a trip, something of that nature.
I have, can I just add something to that, Danny? Because I think code enforcement is out there looking at the RVs that we have in town. Because I had somebody complain that they had their, they extended, they have an RV, and they propped it out, and they had a floor laid on the whole RV, so they couldn't close it. But by law, like I think Kaylee just mentioned, is that those are recreational vehicles, or you might have mentioned, they have to be able to be moved. And having a permanent sideout, I guess, is not considered DOT-worthy.
No, you couldn't take it down the road like that.
No. I guess they have to be, because their license is recreational, not permanent housing.
So we actually had, my wife and I had a pit wall with slideouts, and when I store it, I open it. I do, because when you pull it in, the heat from outside will get in there. It's not out, it's not locked and sealed. The heat will get out there and it'll, will get into there, and it'll grow mold, so that part, I don't know it's worth jumping through, because somebody could argue, I have to have it, or next time I open it, it's gonna be moldy.
If they can't close it, that's a whole different story.
Right, right. If it's permanent, then yeah, something's goofy. Yeah, then it's not movable. As far as power, I...
You led to believe somebody's living in it.
Right, it's rental property.
Which is where I think that this will take us. I always hook power up to mine, too, because it gets hot in there. And next time I go in, everything's moldy and moldy. If I'm moldy and mildewy, sorry. If I had, keep the power on in there, I can keep it fresh, so the next time my wife and kids go in it, we don't have to spend four hours cleaning it. But where it gets sticky is somebody could be living in it, and you can't prove it. If they're willing to go to the magistrate and say, no, nobody's living in it, then it's gonna be their word against yours. But if you were to write something in the ordinance that no water and no sewer is to be hooked up to it, because you won't, there's, there's no argument that could be presented that says, I have to have sewer hooked up to it while I'm storing it. It doesn't hold water. I mean, facetiously.
It doesn't.
But you could say, no water and no sewer hooked up to it. And then that would give code enforcement the ammunition to be able to say, unhook it. And then if it's unhooked, now nobody can live in it, because they, they don't have, I mean, I guess they can go out there at two in the morning and fill the gray water in, or the, the water tank, and they could live in it and just dump their, there's ways that people can get around it. But if you let, yeah, if we don't have an ordinance that says that you can't have sewer hookup and water hookup into it, it's gonna be harder for people to get away with living in them.
I think that would be, yeah, because there's one in Seminole, he's got to clean out all of his little hoses going right into it.
Right. And then from the fire side of it, you cannot park anything within six feet of an egress window. So, and we have...
Sorry, can you repeat that again?
You can't put a shed, you can't put anything. It's either six or ten feet in front of an egress window. So if the window is a means of egress, a secondary means of egress for a dwelling unit, a bedroom, you can't put a shed, you can't park anything in there in front of it. Firefighters can't get in, you can't get out of the window. So then it's, then it's creating a life safety issue. So that's...
Need to find a way to get to the one that's on Alverdes and Olympia. It's extended out, it's been there. I think somebody's living there, because the way the cars park, and it is definitely right up against the house.
Which I think until we have ordinances written that says that this is, this is the law, they can go out there and, and there's not a whole lot, we kind of have to put the ammunition in code enforcement rifle in order to do something.
But from the fire safety perspective...
There's no, without them pulling a permit, I don't have the authority to go do anything as a building official.
Travis would, Fire Marshal.
Fire Marshal. He probably would.
He sees something, he can say, hey, I need to look at it.
Right.
Backing up a little bit to the RV question that we discussed, and we all thought it went one way, but it didn't. We did talk about one RV per home parked on a hard surface.
On hard surface, yep.
I think we should probably go ahead and designate.
I agree with that, the hard surface.
Now, can it be extended, you know, the sides extended and electricity plugged in? I mean, I do understand that. Don't want to, especially in South Florida, if you're gonna get mildewy quick.
I think that's reasonable. Yeah.
But like you said, the water and sewer is not, not for a recreational vehicle.
I think there should be a distance from the sidewalk or the property line. I think, I thought we talked about six feet, but it could be mistaken. You know, includes the tongue, you know, the whole thing has to be so far off the sidewalk. And I think we did say you could park it in the back or the side, but you still only get one RV. And if they park it on the side, the bedroom, you're not gonna be able to do it anyway, because that's an egress window.
In feet.
You can get it in the backyard, that's fine, but you still only get one. Anything we might have talked about? No, it's not what was approved.
Come back, yeah.
Well, this is what I remember us talking about, that we can all decide if that's what we want. And of course, they have to be tagged and legal and all that.
Yeah, yeah, if we can get it next meeting, maybe.
I think we had talked about them, like, people needing to register their RVs. We did talk about that at one point.
I think we decided, because they had a, they already have to have, they have to have a tag on it, right? It has to be current. We did add that, it had to have a current tag.
Yes. But it would just be ideal for the city to know where RVs are in the community, to monitor them and make sure that they're in compliance somehow. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, they're easy to see, but if you had personal contact with each person, you could even have them sign an agreement that they wouldn't let anyone live in there. That might help.
But are we, are we legally allowed to have people register an RV? Like, kind of like we used to do golf carts before the state moved in and made...
You have people...
You heard of that?
Trading them in and getting new ones?
Yeah.
You certainly could. You could also go at it with the angle of accessory dwelling unit. So you have the primary dwelling unit, it's only supposed to be one house or however many acres or lot or whatever. And then the RV would be an accessory dwelling unit, so it shouldn't be occupied for an extended period of time. You can put it that way. Now, that being said, do we have an accessory dwelling unit ordinance?
Do you have, is it certain per acre that you can do that? But I mean, on an original, is there a minimum lot size to have a mother-in-law's court in the... Yeah, then you have plenty of land. Well, I'm just thinking about the guy that just built a big pool house. I mean, he could put a couple of families in there if he wanted. Is that okay?
I guess I go back to the single-family, you know, if it's a single-family lot, then they shouldn't have a second home on it, right? They'll be able to rent a part of the house, that's another issue with the single-family home, but they've got it divided up in three apartments or...
I think that's agenda item number five, short-term rentals.
I'm sorry?
I think that's agenda item number five, short-term rentals.
Okay. I think there's several.
Three thirty-seven, Del Monte.
Yeah.
None of these towns.
No, they've done it, you know, we just, we're guessing that because of the number of cars, that that's what's happened, and that there could be additional ones, especially when you see a posted rental available on a single-family property, and you already know that one family's already living there. So I just, you know, I don't know how we come, get around that or how we address it. But it seems to be, it never was an issue in the past, but it seems to be more and more that we're seeing that where single-family homes are being divided into at least two to three units for rentals. And not short, I mean, it could be short-term rentals, not like an Airbnb, but these are, you know, fifteen hundred dollars a month for an apartment inside a house.
And figure out what's going on in there.
Right.
Mm-hmm. But if they post a rental in a, in a single-family home...
Yeah, could we, well, I know we're gonna get to that one next. Let's finish up the RV. Do you want her to write the two different ones, right?
Yes, yes.
And then we'll specify the RV, the things we just talked about, so far from the sidewalk, one RV. Then if any other commissioners have other...
And no water and sewer?
No water and sewer hookup. I mean, less than cleaning it, something of that nature.
Well, it's in a, it's unless it's in a park, and I think that's a little bit different, isn't it?
Yes, yeah, that would be different.
But on your, on your...
Do you all mind sending your suggestions to me separately, so that I can get them to Kaylee, and we can make sure it's in the ordinance regarding the RV, because you all are coming at me.
I'm good, just what we discuss is what works for me.
That's it, I didn't catch all of it.
Do you have everything down?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And then going back to your other conversation about, you know, possibly two or three families living in one house that's been split up, depending on the zoning, there may be some zoning remedies that we have there. For example, if there's a, you know, single-family zoning, one house, one lot, then it's not a multi-family unit. So it would be against the zoning code. So I think that's where we get into having the building and zoning vote talking to each other, and that would be one remedy that we may already have.
What about limiting vehicles per home? I mean, there's one on San Luis, there's seven vehicles.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pipe up. As a mom of four boys, like legitimately, there are times where there's four trucks, five rusty, my car, and then a US sugar truck at my house. And that's seven vehicles, and I assure you, they all belong to someone that lives there legally. So like, we can't sleep on that sometimes people have bigger families.
Could we leave it, say, okay, you've got seven vehicles, then that means we've got to, we can open the door and say, hey, clean these vehicles, because they live here.
I mean, I wouldn't have been offended if somebody knocked on the, people joked about it all the time. Like, it looks like you have a used car lot in your front yard, you know? It wouldn't have bothered me any if somebody knocked and asked.
But don't they, can't they run the tax and find out if it's the same, it's all at the same address?
Yeah, that's what we did to this guy on Ventura. We ran it on Ventura, and that's what happened. There weren't his vehicles. Yeah, that's, that's one of the first ones.
They have three insta-hot water heaters outside.
Yep.
Yeah.
They do.
Now they're covering up the plant. Did you say they have three hot water heaters?
Yeah.
Either they love hot water showers, or they shower for hours.
Yeah.
Or there's three different families living there. But anyway.
All right, we got a...
You got that one. So we'll go, move on to number five, which is what we've kind of been talking about. Proceed regarding short-term rentals, which my wife sees one every other day, she'll see something posted Facebook or wherever. Rental in Lewiston, they never put the address unless you call them or message them or whatever. They're out there and they're doing it.
You just have to go to Airbnb or whatever that site is, and you'll see that there's about eight or nine listed Airbnbs in single-family neighborhoods in Lewiston, which I think, I don't know how, I know that we talked about a registration of Airbnbs in town. I think there were some things that we could do. But we can't say, no Airbnbs in residential neighborhoods, because state law overrides us on that. But I think that we don't have anything in place to monitor. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, also that there was supposed to be some kind of a tag on these Airbnbs for law enforcement and first responders to know that this was a rental or something like that. I think that's what Travis told us at that.
Mm-hmm, I remember that conversation.
There's one city that's up in the Orlando area, you must live on site. You can't have Airbnbs all over in residential. You have to live.
Is that a deep restriction, or can we make that an ordinance?
You may be able to make it into an ordinance. I know there are several coastal cities in South Florida, Fort Myers Beach being one of them, that have some very good short-term rental ordinances that...
I was about to say, I think we should look at how other communities are handling it and not, because I mean, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, and it might not be the popular opinion, but I don't want to see us squash this. I think that tourism on Lake Okeechobee is a real thing.
Yep.
And, and folks get really tired of paying these exuberant hotel prices along Twenty-Seven. And a lot of times, they need the, the space and/or amenities that come with renting a home versus a hotel room. You know, like you have a kitchen, and I don't know, I think we need to be sensitive to the tourism side of it.
Yeah, the registration.
No, no, that doesn't, that doesn't put a damper on it at all. Um.
And some of them are in somebody's homes because some of them do list the properties and it is somebody's home, but they have like.
An extra room.
An extra room. And I don't know about firewall and all that, but they do have an extra room and bathroom where they've converted a part of their house to have an apartment.
But I, I, I mean, we, as someone who has stayed in Airbnbs for years, like we've stayed in someone else's house. And you literally walk through their front door and all you have is this bedroom and this bathroom. I don't know that it required any special fire stuff.
So I've done a lot of digging into this one since I got here. I don't think you can make it go away, to be quite honest with you. So I'm glad you're okay with it staying.
Yeah.
Um, but regulating it is the biggest thing. I looked through, we actually have a short-term, we can't call it Airbnb because Airbnb is a company, short-term vacation rental. Um, short-term vacation rentals, I've looked at other ordinances. I actually talked to my friend who's the mayor down in Everglade City. They stayed away from it because of some lawsuits against some local municipalities. So before I present something to you, we're going to chew on it for a while because I don't want to say, here's a great idea and you guys voted in and we end up in a lawsuit. So, um, but.
Because it's people's income and.
It is. And it is, ultimately, it's good for the community because people are here spending money. While they're here, they're going to go to the sandwich shop over there and they're going to go to the coffee shop. They're spending money here. So it's, it's a good source of revenue for the, the town, but let's regulate it. I looked at the, y'all, I think that the ordinance says that they have to pass an inspection. It's pretty vague. What am I looking for? What are the standards that were set? So I've gone through some of those with, um, Travis and a couple of other building officials, what I can require. They didn't actually pull a permit, so I can't make them bring the electric up to code. I can't make them. But there's some life safety issues that I think that we need to take pretty serious. Um, if I wake up at two in the morning in my house, I know how to find the front door, but you don't. So when you're at my house, renting it and something happens, you can't find your way to the door. That's a life safety issue. So, uh, I'm, I'm working on.
I don't remember all that.
Yep. I'm working on, um, and then there's pool safety and stuff. We don't want to have a bunch of accidents or fatalities happening in our city because we didn't, uh, come through this incorrectly. So I'm working on drawing some stuff up for Kaylee to review. And then, again, I know I said this twice already, but next meeting, I'll have something for you.
You're going to be busy.
Yeah. You do realize we're, we're in here again on Monday, so you better be careful with next meeting.
Maybe even parking or, or short-term rental. I don't know. You look at other ordinances, maybe you can check that. Because that's, that's a problem without a short-term rental at some of our houses. Lots of kids or there could be someone living there and it just brings in extra vehicles and they're on the right of way. And just over on Arcade, the Benton trucks were parked all over that rental home. And then they got better. I think Mario got them. And then, uh, they sneak out once in a while and park all over again, but just we need to make the town look unsightly. So parking is going to be something important concerning the short-term rentals and really just any, any residential. So anyway, anything else? Any more direction that we can give?
I think we're good. Good? Good.
As we will move on to staff comments, the manager?
I'm good, Mayor. Ready for the budget.
All right. Our attorney, anything?
No comments.
Okay, any staff have anything? Not budget, but for this meeting? Okay, I'll enter, um, commissioners? Okay, we will.
Adjourn.
Motion to adjourn and we will reconvene. We'll take a five or 10-minute.